Welcome to the Monday, August 2nd, 2021 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Pander Leon.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
Alderman Rumel.
Here.
Alderman Notes is running late.
Here. Is it on?
Yep. I can hear you. Thank you. Alderman Preschlack is absent. Alderman Gushkarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. Beautiful week of weather, beautiful weekend of weather, and welcome to all of our visitors and staff. And we'll see if I can remember how to do this. First thing on our agenda, actually, I'm going to take a moment and just talk about Lake Forest Day because the representative from the American Legion is over at West Park supervising and couldn't make it at the last minute. But Lake Forest Day is Wednesday. The carnival opens tomorrow night at 6:00. There is a 5K and Fun Run at 7:00 a.m. on Wednesday. The parade starts at 10:00. The carnival runs from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And with a little luck, I'll see everybody at the beer tent, or the beer cage, I guess we call it, not the beer tent. So it looks like the weather's going to be spectacular, and hopefully, we'll have a turnout as big as the one we had at the beach this weekend, which was mobbed. But we've just had a great run of weather, and it's going to be, I think, one of the nicest Lake Forest days, weather-wise, that we've ever had, or at least in my experience. So come one, come all, and have a great time. The next item on the agenda is a resolution of sympathy for former Alderman Gail Hodges. I worked very closely with Gail. I was on the committee that created the, or how do I say "created"? We wrote the ordinance for the Historic Preservation Commission. I don't even remember what year that was. I'm not even sure what decade anymore. But it was a major undertaking, and Gail was a fabulous leader of that effort. And it's given us, you know, a great legacy. So let me read the resolution, and then we'll take a vote. Whereas on behalf of the City of Lake Forest, the City Council expresses its profound sadness at the loss of Gail T. Hodges at the age of 82 on July 1, 2021. And whereas Gail's love of and pride in the city of Lake Forest and the many organizations she served was inspiring, and her commitment to the preservation and progress of the community was evident by all and never waned. And whereas Gail served as Third Ward Alderman from 1993 to 1999, and in that role dedicated time, energy, and passion to serving her constituents and the entire Lake Forest community. And whereas prior to serving as Alderman, Gail served as Chairman of the Building Review Board from 1990 to 1993, and led that group through many long meetings and careful deliberations. And whereas while serving on the City Council, she was engaged in the restoration of City Hall and contributed to the passage of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, which provided protections for historic districts, a framework that today still guides the city's Historic Preservation Commission processes and decisions. Whereas after retiring as Alderman, Gail continued to serve the community and provided valuable expertise in many ways, including as a member of various special committees and advisory groups, including the Forest Park Board, Lake Forest Open Lands Association, Lake Forest Preservation Foundation, which allowed her to work alongside community leaders to both preserve and protect the community's special character, while at the same time planning for the future and being open to new ideas. And whereas Gail Hodges also served as the Executive Director of Gorton Community Center for many years, she oversaw the renovation of the center in the 1990s to bring it into ADA compliance and restore the historical integrity of the building, including the uncovering of WPA Federal Art Project murals in the auditorium that were later restored. And whereas Gail's calm demeanor and quiet charisma never wavered as she made efforts to get to know others, to hear their ideas, and to share stories, which allowed her to build and maintain strong relationships within the community and the many organizations she served. And whereas Gail was kind and gentle, never too busy to offer friendship, advice, encouragement, or counsel to others, she made time for everyone who needed it. And whereas Gail's passion and commitment to human services and equity extended beyond her volunteerism, as she devoted her professional life to connecting individuals and families in Lake Forest and across Lake County to counseling caregiving and educational services. And whereas Gail Hodges leaves a lasting legacy in our community and will long be remembered for her contributions and influence to Lake Forest, and more importantly, as a friend and confidant to many. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, in session on August 2nd, 2021, hereby expresses its deep regret and sincere sympathy to her husband, James Hodges. Be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to James Hodges, with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the August 2nd, 2021 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Do I have a motion?
This is all moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Karas.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Gushkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. I understand that there may be a couple of members, one or two members of the audience that would like to make a couple of comments about Gail. Michael?
Where do I stand? Right here?
Behind the bulletproof shield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and Mr. Hodges. I served as the first chairperson of the newly-created Historic Preservation Commission. Although Gail was not a member of the commission, I was constantly mindful of her singular role in the preparation of the city's Historic Preservation Ordinance. Indeed, when the mayor then invited me to chair the new commission, my instinct was to consult with Gail. I learned a great deal from that most instructive conversation. And routinely, I checked in with Gail when contentious petitions became before the commission. As many of you know, the Lake Forest Historic Preservation Ordinance has the strongest teeth in the state of Illinois. When delegations from Lake Bluff, Island Park, and Hinsdale consulted with us about our model ordinance, in each instance, representatives of those locales reported back that their respective communities would not abide by the strictures of the Lake Forest Historic Preservation Ordinance. Also, when another mayor asked me, I've since gotten a private line, to chair a group of citizens to develop a Historic Preservation Document for the Forest Park Project, I insisted that Gail be appointed to serve on our task force. Everyone involved learned a great deal from Gail over several months of sometimes contentious deliberations culminating in our hefty report adopted by the mayor and the city council. As you might guess, the document's principal author, our James Madison, if you will, was Gail Hodges. While not every member of our task force enthusiastically subscribed to our report's final form, it certainly prevailed. Without Gail's devotion to the Forest Park Project unquestionably, it would not be the sumptuous expanse that graces our lakefront. By my calculation, across some four decades, Gail Hodges imparted an enduring impression upon this distinctive and historic American community. Her legacy embodies in singular and unwavering devotion to the historic preservation of the city of Lake Forest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Comments from the council? Alderman Rumel.
It was my pleasure to serve with Gail on the Gorton Board for many years, and then for even more, longer years, to serve with her on the Lake Forest Open Lands Board, where she was in charge of marketing for many, many years, and really turned their marketing program around. Gail was just always pleasant, but yet determined, seldom missed a meeting, and when Gail spoke, everyone listened and respected her so much. She will be deeply missed in this community.
I share those thoughts. I spent many hours and meetings with Gail on not just the Historic Preservation Commission, but other things she was involved in, and she was always very thoughtful, very thoroughly And when she got her teeth into something, you know, you didn't mess with her. She just would outwork everybody around. And so it's a great loss, and we'll have to carry on somehow. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you, Michael, for your comments. I just realized I forgot to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So maybe we'll, should we take a break and do the Pledge of Allegiance now, or should we wait until next time? Okay, let's do it now. It's still my turn to talk, so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that concludes my comments. Next item on the agenda is comments by the City Manager. Acting City Manager Mike Strong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few comments this evening. I'm going to start, as you did with this meeting. We're excited to welcome back both old events and new to the community. In July, we welcomed back Festival and Fireworks with True Thousands to Deer Path Community Park. And we've also had outstanding attendance at our concerts in the square, concerts at the beach, and, you know, we have some new events planned. And so I'm excited this evening to introduce Rick Amos with the Friends of Parks and Recreation Foundation, who is Festival Chairman. He's going to share some updates with you about the upcoming Lake Forest Music Festival that'll be taking place on Saturday, August 21st.
Rick, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for allowing me to stand before you tonight. It's always a pleasure to come and update folks on what's happening within our Park and Recreation Foundation. Thank you. So before I get into the Lake Forest Music Festival, for those of you that were able to attend the Fourth of July Festival, as Mike said, it's a great event. We had a great turnout. We had wonderful weather, and it was a nice return to what we used to do, right? And so if any of you had the chance to be there, I think you would have enjoyed the evening, or you did enjoy the evening. One thing that struck out to me was how many first timers we had attend the festival this year. For those of you who were there, I kind of took an unofficial poll while I was up on the stage, asking how many folks were here for the first time. I would guesstimate somewhere between 25% and 30% of the folks in the crowd, which was about 7,000 people, raised their hands. So while this is an event for Lake Forest and Lake Bluff residents that we primarily focus on, you know, I think opening our door, if you will, to folks outside of our community to come and experience such a great event, and maybe to come into our community and experience the wonderfulness that we have to offer, I think was a great opportunity for us and a great statement made on behalf of the City of Lake Forest to folks that maybe don't get a chance to visit our town that often. So I wanted to thank everybody for their contributions to that event. Certainly, the mayor and the city council plays a big part in what we're doing. Many folks with city staff are contributing to that success of that event. I get to stand before you tonight and talk about all the fun stuff, but, you know, there's probably 50, 60, 70 people that are individually contributing to that event to make it the success it is. And so thank you to the police chief and the fire chief for their support, and certainly Joe and Sally, you know, without them and their dedication, and their teams of folks really working hard when it's 90 degrees outside to make it seamless for everybody. That event doesn't happen. And then certainly, the support of the Lake Forest Bank to that event contributes to its success. So, you know, great day, enjoyed by all, and we acknowledge the fact that there's a lot of people that contribute to that. So thank you again for our 15th year of doing it, and I've been to every one of them, right? So wow. Well, these days, somebody's going to want to replace me, I hope. So with that success, and we've learned a few things over the years, and there are many that serve on our foundation that believe that one of our missions is not only support the Park and Recreation Department, but to support the city. And one of the ways to do that is to participate and throw events that invite those within our community and those without to come and enjoy the things that we can do in our special community. So as you see up on the board, on August 21st, which is three weeks from Saturday, we will host the inaugural Lake Forest Music Festival. So for those of you that have been around for a while, this is a rebranding effort that originally started off as an Oktoberfest and then became a fall festival after we served Indian food at an Oktoberfest event, because our food vendor decided not to show. So we've kind of moved the theme around a little bit, and we think from learning what Winnetka's done and from talking to consultants, we think we've nailed it this time, or so we hope, as long as the weather cooperates. We've been rained out three of the first four years of trying to do this, so hopefully, this year will work for us. So you're seeing a theme here of a music festival, so we will have two stages, one in the parking lot directly behind this magnificent building and one to the west. We have six bands that'll be performing, so it will be truly a wide variety of music. The stages will alternate as to not compete with each other. And then most successful events of this nature have a food theme, if you will, or a beverage theme to it. So this year's theme will be burgers and bourbon. So there'll be all sorts of alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages available to everybody else. We'll probably have a burger contest, if you will, with a handful of vendors that are going to participate, and we'll have a fun day. It'll start at 3:00 in the afternoon. It'll run to about 10:00, and it should be a wonderful evening. So, Joe, I think I want to click this, right? So here's a little bit of our entertainment for those of you that like music. So we really feel like we've scored with this lineup. So the Fletcher Rockwell Band is a cover band. The Trippin' Billies is a Dave Matthews cover band, and those kind of get it going, if you will, in the evening. Brooke Eden is an up-and-coming, rising country musician, what I think's going to be a star three or four years ago, or three or four years from now. She just performed at the Grand Old Opry in Nashville three weeks ago. We actually booked her the day before she got that event, so we think we're going to see a superstar in the making. For those of you that have been around for 15 years ago, we had a similar experience with the Lake Forest Music Festival. There was a rising 17-year-old country star that was coming up, and we were excited to try to get her, and everybody thought we were overpaying for her, but we thought she was going to be good. And unfortunately, on the Friday, when her manager said she would probably do it, and Monday, she won two American Music Awards as New Coming Artist of the Year, and you may know, her name's Taylor Swift. And so we missed out on Taylor 13 years ago, but Brooke Eden has that kind of potential. We'll see if she's as lucky as Taylor Swift is. Bruce in the USA is the top-ranked Bruce Springsteen cover band in the country. They're out of Las Vegas, and we were able to get them through our connections to play this event. And then Joe Nichols is a country star, has been around for a while and has five number-one hits, so he'll be the headliner. That'll close out the evening. And Brass Knuckles, a country band, so they'll be part of our opening act during the day. So diverse group of music. We hope that'll reach all audiences and all genres, but anyway, it should be a fantastic day. So we hope you come out. This is a family event, so the theme is, is come, buy a ticket. You have in-and-out privileges with your ticket, so if you want to come for a couple hours, go home for a couple hours and come back. You can do that. It's right in town, so it'll be easy and accessible to everybody there. We have various ticket options for everybody to participate in. Have a great day. There'll be kids' activities for them to participate in, so if the younger ones aren't quite into the music, there'll be things for them to do while mom and dad or grandma and grandpa have fun with the kids. So tickets have started on sale. We've got kind of an end-of-summer theme going with our logo, as you might notice. And so anyway, we think this is going to be a great day, and we hope if you're in town on the 21st, you'll come out and enjoy the event. With that, that concludes my comments, unless there's any questions or anything I can answer for you regarding this event or the Fourth of July Festival.
Any questions?
I have a question right there. So this is a pretty impressive roster of performers. What does success look like for you guys? Do you think that you're attracting mostly from our communities in Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, or the other communities? And if it does draw, you know, a sizable crowd, what does that look like in your mind?
Yeah, so great question. So, you know, at the Fourth of July, we have a larger venue space. So, you know, we've had crowds as large as about 10,000, 11,000 at that venue, but you got 275,000 square feet to work with out there. This is a little more contained, obviously. So, you know, success for us is probably 3,000 to 4,000 people. We would anticipate 85% of those folks being from the Lake Bluff/Lake Forest community. Certainly, we are marketing ourselves to the bordering communities around us, because we'd like to draw an audience. We do recognize that, hey, this is a great community, and this is a great place to live. And so, you know, throwing fun events like this, we think makes our community more attractive to folks. We like the venue space here because we are encouraging folks to take the train in, so ease up the congestion of the traffic, if you will, and so it makes it easier for folks to do that. We are modeling a little bit what Winnetka has done over the last couple of years, and that has been successful. Certainly, our goal is to make some money at doing this as well, you know, to support the Park and Recreation Program, but I think that's probably a secondary goal. Certainly, we want to cover what we're doing, but I think we're trying to say, hey, this is a great community to live and raise a family and attend school, but also, you know, we can have some fun here, too, and this is one more way in which the community and the citizens within the community kind of branch together with city government, if you will, and kind of throw events for the benefit of those folks that live here and that want to come visit our town.
So, and are pre-sale tickets the same as the cost of a ticket at the door, and for the same cost for all ages?
Yeah, good question. So we do not distinguish as to where you are in terms of ticket prices. There are general admission tickets that are available for kids as well as adults, and then we have some ticket packages available. So if you're bringing a family, there's some discounts there associated with a family ticket price. Or we also offering a food and beverage entrance ticket package as well, so there's a variety of tickets available to you. You will save $5 if you buy a ticket ahead of time versus at the gate the day of the event. You'll start to see our marketing. Certainly, you can go to our websites and look at those options here, but our social media and our print and digital media marketing promotions are really starting to kick off this week, so you'll start seeing more and more stuff, or hopefully, around about the event.
Any other questions? I'd just like to compliment your organization for all the hard work and commitment, creativity, and resilience. After the experiences of the Oktoberfest, you're still here talking to us and smiling, so just thank you so much for everything you guys have done over the years and continue to do, and to continue to innovate and make Lake Forest more fun than it would be without you.
There you go. Well, thank you for your comments. Obviously, we like to say we're a band of about 20 folks that kind of do this. I get to be the spokesman here, but, you know, again, without your support, and certainly Joe and Sally and their team's support, you know, none of this would happen. So the good news is, we're all pitching in to make this work for everybody. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mike?
Next comment, probably the first time we've used the hashtag in a comment item, but I wanted to let the City Council know that Friday, August 13th, is City Hall Selfie Day, which is becoming a growing national trend. So today, our communications manager, Dana Olson, is just going to explain a little bit more about what the campaign is to hopefully entice you to participate. And for those watching at home, we hope to see you out in front of City Hall on Friday, August 13th. So Dana?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Thank you for having me here today. As Mike mentioned, the sixth annual hashtag City Hall Selfie Day is coming up on Friday, August 13th, so it's time to get your angles, lighting, and smiles ready to go. City Hall Selfie Day is a worldwide celebration of local government service hosted by engaging local government leaders, or ELGL. City Hall Selfie Day is online picture sharing in front of city halls and other government buildings. Participants take a selfie or self-portrait in front of the building and share it with the hashtag CityHallSelfie. We're encouraging elected officials, residents, and city staff to participate this year. And ELGL recognizes City Hall Selfie Award winners in multiple categories, so we're hoping for a strong turnout so that we can earn some bragging rights for Lake Forest. City Hall selfies are traditionally taken in front of city halls, but you can also take pictures in front of the Municipal Services Building, Public Safety, or any other city facility. And while the official City Hall Selfie Day is Friday, August 13th, you can take pictures in advance to share on the day. Up on the screen is the Office of the City Manager team. We did our City Hall selfie last week. So see, it's easy. It's approachable. You just take a selfie in front of City Hall. So how do you participate? You take a picture of yourself or a group in front of City Hall or another city building and post the picture on social media with the hashtag CityHallSelfie and tag the City of Lake Forest I.L. on Facebook and Instagram. You can also email pictures to cityhall@cityoflakeforest.com for a chance to be featured on the city's social media pages. And to demonstrate how easy it is to participate, I'd love to take a quick selfie with the council tonight, if you're comfortable with that, and we can demonstrate to everyone just how easy it is to take a City Hall selfie.
So are we okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to try and get a good angle. I practiced this morning, so I think we can get everybody in. All right, big smile. All right, selfie.
So thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing everybody's City Hall selfie, go for it, on Friday, August 13th. That concludes my comments. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions, Dana. Thanks. It's fun, I think. Are you, are we doing anything to promote sort of competition between departments, city departments? And also to entice, you said, just residents? So I'm wondering if you're doing anything to entice residents?
Yes, we're going to launch a campaign for internal friendly competition to encourage different departments. We have a lot of different services that the city provides and a lot of different departments that can participate. I'm trying to get fire to do some, the fire department to do some selfies on a fire truck, so that's in the works, but we will be promoting it, pushing it out on social media to encourage residents to participate as well.
Mr. Mayor, are we allowed to place bets on who we think will win?
Not publicly.
But yes, we'll be pushing it internally, but also with the public, since we want our residents to also participate and showcase their Lake Forest pride.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
So do you have a selfie stick you can loan out?
You know, I just use this one right here, so I'm happy to take a picture if you need a partner.
Sounds like fun. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dana.
Thanks, Dana. The last item I had, real quick, wanted to brief the City Council on, you may have seen over the weekend, an article in the Chicago Sun-Times about, I'm not going to pronounce the term, but PFAS for short, or Forever Chemicals in Illinois Drinking Water. We did provide information about this in our 2020 Annual Water Quality Report that we issued earlier this year, but I've asked Superintendent of Public Works Dan Martin here to just to provide some additional context to the City Council on PFAS, the current guidance levels, and our the current guidance levels and our current testing results that we received from the state. So Dan?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, thank you. As Mike had mentioned, we had an article in the paper, I think it went electronically on Friday, and then it was in the paper on the Sun-Times on Sunday. And our water plant, chief water plant operator, John Gullards, was part of that article. So it was nice to get the coverage. I think it did a good job of explaining what was going on as Illinois tries to develop and set these guidelines through the IEP A. As Mike indicated, PFAS or PFOS chemicals have been around for decades and are used to repel water and oil and many products, stain resistant clothing, waterproof products, non-stick pans and cookware, polishes and waxes. And it's in a lot of different applications, including firefighting foam. Statewide, IEP A testing analysis included a total of 18 PFOSs. So there's quite a few different types of components of these chemicals. One PFOS in Lake Forest was the PFOA type of PFOS and it revealed a slightly elevated level of 2.5 parts per trillion. Current IEP A PFOS or PFOA guidance levels in Illinois is two parts per trillion. So the city level was 0.5 parts per trillion over the current guidance. As you can see to the right of the slide, just to put an indication of what we're talking about as far as parts per trillion, that is a single drop of water in 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools that we're talking about here as far as the level. As we talked a little bit, Mike mentioned the water quality report. Most of the things that we're testing in the water, that's part of that water quality report, which is online, is in the parts per million or parts per billion. We haven't left, this is one of the few of any that we've ever had where it's tested in parts per trillion. So we're talking minute amounts, half a drop was over the guidance. The U.S. EPA's Health Advisory for PFOA is 70 parts per trillion versus the IEP A's two parts per trillion. I believe Wisconsin is around 10 parts per trillion. And as it mentioned in the article, Michigan is eight parts per trillion. So Wisconsin, Illinois took a, you know, more aggressive approach, I think, was they determine and go through and finish up all their testing, which isn't due to be done until October. So we don't even have all of the, you know, communities tested that produce water. And then from there, they'll establish a guideline moving forward. The City of Lake Forest continues to follow all IEP A guidelines and measures. The city will continue to work with the IEP A to monitor PFOS levels. The IEP A is continuing its statewide testing and investigation of PFOS. That is, will ultimately will be to determine the IEP A maximum regulatory standard. And I believe this really does follow a lot of the modeling that's been taking place with other states that have done this, to include Michigan, that was mentioned in the article. So with that, I could answer any questions.
Questions?
Yes.
Thank you for that bit of information. I just, I have a couple of observations and then a question. And again, when we're measuring in parts per trillion, we're talking about a, I don't want to say infinitesimal, but a very, very small amount. You know, by comparison, when I read that article, I thought I would, you know, look into some information on my own. And the IEP A is a little sketchy in terms of where you can find information, which is a little worrisome to me. But at least the Federal Environmental Protection Agency, when we look at compounds like cyanide that do exist within our waterways, their metric is two parts per billion, as you said. And again, when we look at it, parts per billion compared to parts per trillion, that's a very significant delta. So the EPA has two parts per billion for cyanide and 10 parts per billion for arsenic. The thing that's really troubling to me is that we have essentially an agency rule, which is not an elected official. We're dealing with scientists, I guess you'd call them down in Springfield, comparing to the weight and knowledge of the federal government, the long reach of the federal government. And we're seeing a significant difference between the two. We're dealing with the state agency that's saying two parts per trillion versus the EPA, which is 70 parts per trillion. It's a 35-fold difference. And based on that article, as I read it, we were above, we were below, we were above, at least hovering in that area. And it's a great concern to me now that, and believe me, I'm a fan of governmental oversight, but there's also overreach. And I'm concerned that if we become reactionary to this, that we might go down a rabbit hole that we need not. I'm also curious if maybe you could get back to us in a further date. If we have other variances, again, I just brought up two toxic elements, cyanide and arsenic. Are there variances within the IEP A regulations and the Federal Environmental Protection Agency recommendations? And I think these are things that we should consider. And I don't have an opinion on it. This is really for point of information. But you know, we don't have to look too far back in recent history to look at when there were PBAs in plastic bottles. And that was very worrisome, but there wasn't any science out on that. PBAs, for those who may not know, are synthetic that occur within plastic bottles that simulated estrogen within laboratory mice. The substitute that they went with was fluorine bisphenol, which is abbreviated BHPF. With no science on the first component, they swapped out that chemical for that which we see in plastic bottles and other reusable containers. And the science on that one now is saying that it's not, it doesn't simulate estrogen within laboratory animals. It actually blocks estrogen receptors. So to me, you know, I'm a big fan of letting the science play out.
Sure.
You know, we can set an arbitrary goal, we can set an arbitrary metric in terms of what we think is safe. But you know, these microplastics are a very serious problem within our environment. But I'm all in favor of, you know, number one, getting comparisons between the delta between the IEP A and the EPA. And then secondarily, the science on this is relatively new. And I think it's in our own best interest if one is concerned about those components within our drinking water. I know the simple solution is to use a carbon-activated filter in your own home.
Correct.
Those will filter down to 0.5 microns, I believe. And most, most microplastics exist somewhere at the smallest level at 2.5 microns. So you can be relatively certain that those will not be in your drinking water. I personally think that, you know, the new water plant that we have with the membrane filtration system probably provides us the highest quality of water in the United States. And I could be wrong, but I think it's in that category. And I would be curious to see how, you know, Lake Forest is a city that could probably afford it. But with these state guidelines and these state mandates, how are some of our less fortunate municipalities going to adhere to these somewhat rigid goals that they're wanting to impose and testing and retesting and testing and retesting? I just want to caution us against jumping too quickly on this. I don't think it would be prudent. But that being said, if you have a future date, and it doesn't have to be in an open council meeting, I'd be happy if the council, my fellow council members were to receive an email
Sure.
to know if there are some significant discrepancies between federal and state regulations.
As this evolves, yes, I think that's what we'll do. We're in the very early stages. Illinois is a little bit behind some of the other states, as the article indicated. So until they are able to gather all of this to see just where, you know, really what are we looking at and how big of an issue is the PFOS in the Illinois, you know, different areas? There's, as the article pointed out, there's certain concentrated areas around old manufacturing plants. And those are very isolated, they're terrible to hear about, but they're very isolated compared to what we're dealing with here. And you know, two parts per trillion is their guidance and we're a half part per trillion over. It's not, when the U.S. EPA has got it at 70, I think at this point, we'll just, you need to continue working through that with them. I'm sure there's going to be, and typically when these things come out like we did with lead and copper back in the 90s, and as we go through the program before any measurable restriction, regulatory guidelines are going to come out, there's going to be a time for us to give back, feedback and open dialogue between IEP A. And hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to go in there and help with other communities dial in the proper amount for regulatory.
Right.
But sure.
Let me make one, can I make a comment first? I just, because I'm sorry to steal the podium here, but the reason this is being discussed tonight is because I asked for it to be discussed tonight because somehow by accident, instead of getting the Sunday Daily Herald for my 94-year-old mother-in-law who lives with us, we got the Sun-Times yesterday, just randomly. And on the front page was this article. And Lake Forest figured very prominently in it. And it's, while if you read it carefully, it's reasonably balanced and not unduly concerning, if you just read the first, the headline and the first couple of paragraphs, you could come away very easily with the belief that Lake Forest water, you know, drinking water is polluted with this stuff. And it's really not the right conclusion. The state set these guidelines super low so that they could try to collect data. It's basically an effort to force all the communities to measure this so they can collect the data and find out how much of this is really out there and where it is. And you'll notice the states around us have levels, you know, guideline levels that are four or five times as high as the state of Illinois and the federal level is 35 times as high. So, and I've dealt with this, these issues in Massachusetts as well, where we had a firefighting foam that got into the drinking water, into the wells, basically, near the airport. And you know, that's a much, much higher level as well. So this is an article about what probably is not a problem in Lake Forest, but it certainly is a problem in some of these areas inland where they're drinking well water, near, you know, former manufacturing facilities and other kind of industrial uses. And it's probably an issue around O'Hare Airport because for years they've used, for firefighting purposes, they would, you know, they do their training and then they would just pour this firefighting foam all over the plane and then just let it run off into the dirt. And that's what happened in Massachusetts. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had a record that this article, you know, if not read carefully, could lead to a false impression and kind of try to get ahead of this before the social media people, the social media experts get a hold of it and decide that we're all, you know, at risk here. So Alderman?
Right, so have you tried collecting this information in the lake water around the intakes that we use in the Lake Michigan and what the levels are in the raw water before it comes in?
We have not yet. This was required and actually, the first three tests that were done were done by an IPA technician that came to the plant and they did the finished water through our test. Now, moving forward, we'll do quarterly tests and it will include a raw water as well as a finished water and those will go off.
And see how big the problem is out there?
Correct.
Great, thanks.
Makes comparison.
Alderman Romo?
First of all, I want to thank Alderman Gashgerian for doing such thorough research on this. I found your comments very informative. Thank you very much. I didn't read the article, but as I was walking up here to the dais, I was getting text messages already from residents about this. So first of all, I think probably we should do some sort of release to our residents about it, factual release, talking about this issue. And then, and then I have some questions because I didn't read the article. So PFOAs are what we have, which is one element of PFAS, is that correct? And so where do PFOAs come from? Do we know what that is exactly?
They're chemically produced. They are made by our industry. That they're, we've created them and they are used. And I think most people realize it was the big innovation of the non-stick pan where your egg didn't fall, it just slides around. That was made with PFOS. And the PFOA is one of those main components and the PFOS are probably the two most common PSAs out of the 18 that are there, probably the most common prevalent that we're finding in the testing.
So we're talking about, my term would be Teflon.
Correct.
So these are a form of a microplastic, is that right? And so what is the health concern about these? Is that it's a carcinogen?
Potentially, yes.
Point of information, they don't know.
They are totally agreeing that they really don't know and they haven't gotten to a point of what it does cause at this point. But they're just wanting to track them and get up to speed, probably like other states have, as far as knowing what it is and, you know, the amount of contaminants and what part per trillion are we talking about throughout their state? And that's where we're, that's where we're at right now. But they really don't know. And none of this, both with the U.S. EPA and the Illinois EPA, this is, these are guidelines. They are unregulatory. There is nothing saying that you have to meet this or, you know, get below this or do anything at this point. They're just setting guidelines and to alter, to Mayor Pendeleon's point, they, we believe they set them very low intentionally to really draw out the testing and to have the communities really look deep into this and how it is affecting their water service or water supply. So, and then I think what will happen, just like it did in other states like Michigan, they'll dial that in appropriately and fit it properly.
Well, I also like Alderman Morris's comment, you know, is this something, you know, to measure what we're, right where we're taking it out of the lake? You know, is that, you know, maybe it has something to do with our proximity to Waukegan Harbor? I don't know if it's at all related to any of that, but we all know the tragedy of that situation not too long ago. So I think that's a very interesting question that we should explore, so.
And no one at this point can answer that. And this is, we're taking surface water out of a very big body of water. And there's other aquifers and other people that are taking it out of well, you know, from wells out of their communities as well as lakes and rivers. There's all sorts of different ways and methods that people are drawing for their drinking water. We happen to have a very large body of very clean water. I think we're going to see the best effects out of it, of probably some of these others that are drawn out of wells, similar to PCBs and stuff back in the 80s.
Well, thanks for your information and I do think the best thing we can do is inform our citizens as accurately as possible.
So we will be establishing something on the website as well with frequently asked questions, using diagrams similar to this to try and bring it into perspective and to show that the city's water supply is very good. And it's utmost, they alter filtration, it exceeds many, many water supplies filtration systems. But however, we need to follow and work with the guidelines.
You know, and I hope you'll include in that what Alderman Gashgerian said, that if you're still concerned, use a carbon-activated filter.
Yes.
And put that right out there.
And in Massachusetts, where the wells, where the houses, there are some homes that were affected by this, what they've done is they've simply come in and, at the cost of the airport's liability insurance company, I assume, just installed carbon-activated whole-house filters, which is a nice, it's a nice bonus for the homeowners, actually. Because that's a pretty, that's a pretty expensive upgrade.
I could add one more thing. The U.S. EPA on their website is actually fairly helpful. And it, there's a, there's a page that is treating PFASs in drinking water. And it, there's a, there's a page that is treating PFASs in drinking water with four suggestions. And then it goes on in the last paragraph, addressing if it's a community-wide issue, one community has to weigh the cost benefit of, of what is actually going to occur. And it, you know, to your point, Alderman Romo, you know, there are granulated activated carbon, there's powder-activated carbon, there's an ion exchange resin system, as well as a nanofiltration and reverse osmosis. So, I mean, I think the question is, number one, we're clearly in an information gathering stage right now.
Yeah.
And we're just gathering, it's just raw data, quite honestly. And then beyond that, I think we really need to let the science play out what it really is. It wouldn't make sense to treat something that's not a problem.
Right.
You know, at a significant expense to the community or, and/or the individual homeowner, but for their own peace of mind, I might suggest that if, maybe that this page from the US EPA could be posted also, it'd be good suggestions for homeowners if it's a concern for them, which it may very well be for many people. And others may think, well, you know, I'm going to put faith in.
We would certainly include that, as well as some others. There's a lot of good websites that we've been looking into as far as also the solutions too, so we can share all of that, some extra links at the bottom. But mostly to get out there is describing what they are and where we fit into this and where we are in the stage of this guidance and this investigation that the IEP is doing. They're calling it an investigation. So, they have rightly, you know, not put themselves in a position where they're making any specific demands other than us having to continue our, our monitoring on a quarterly basis, which we don't have a problem doing. So, obviously we'll be following all those guidelines and working closely with the IEP.
Great, great. Any other comments or questions?
Just a question. Has the city fielded many phone calls since the story was published yesterday?
We had one phone call today, one resident, and they were fine with the, they were satisfied hearing what the US EPA's rate of 70 parts per trillion were and where we fit in and they were good. And we will be tracking those as well if we do receive any other calls, so.
Great. Well, thanks, Dan. Appreciate the update and as, as was noted, it's a new complicated issue we'll be diving into and following, so more, more, more to come. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for the citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? I think most of the public has exited, okay. Next item is committee reports. We have a report from the Park and Rec Board, Alderman Goshgarian, and I'll hand it over to you.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's kind of a, a good news item. You'll see on our agenda that this is actually item number seven on our omnibus portion of the agenda. I'd like for Joe Mobio to come up and address the council. And it's essentially about the progress of Veterans Park and, and the several iterations that it's gone through and modifications of scope of project. And really, I think, one of the best, again, a common theme with our staff and our council is we're, we're addressing this and this is going to come in under budget. So, Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Goshgarian, Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council. As Alderman Goshgarian mentioned, I'm going to give just a brief kind of update of where we're at and where we've come on this project. So, a little bit of history is in July of 2020, we did put this project out to bid. We had a bid opening on the 22nd of July and we had six different companies bid the project. All six were over our budget. The original budget, or the remaining money of the original budget was just over $477,000 that what hadn't been spent. So, at that point, staff collaborated and through several discussions and looking at the funding source of the Park and Public Land Fund, possibly having some deficits moving forward, we reevaluated the project and felt that if we could work within a new budget and a new project, which is on the screen, that we would be able to extend the Park and Public Land Fund so that we'd have some money available for tennis courts and other things that come out of that as the years moved on. So, we went back and revisited the plan. We looked at parts of the project that we could do in-house, that we might be able to maybe postpone to a different phase. And so, on the screen in front of you is, is the newest version. We are still going to be opening up the corner entrance, but it's going to be a grass walkway into the park. It's not going to have the, you know, the brick pavers to get to the, to the middle. Those are still going to be coming in from the original entrances. So, that's not changing other than cleaning and leveling and, you know, updating the, the park. We are going to be replacing that corner with, continued with the planting bed that we've talked about. The Veterans Park sign will be on the front. But the biggest addition to this plan is the Veterans Memorial portion will be in the white circle that's got, in the middle of that, in that brick. That will be the location of the memorial, which I will touch upon in a little bit. So, where are we now? Is, we have gone back out to bid. We sent, in the papers on June 2nd of this year, we held a pre-bid conference, which was mandatory for those companies, on June 9th. And on June 30th of 2021, we had a bid opening. The two companies that attended did bid the project and they had also bid it previously in, in 2020. We've reduced the project budget from the, just shy of $750,000 down to $400,000 so that we could extend the life of the Park and Public Land Fund. And as you've, will see, as Alderman Goshgarian mentioned, that in the omnibus, there's, you ask for the approval of that. I wanted to touch a little bit on the relationship that we've been working with the American Legion to build and design a memorial that will sit in the center of the park. The flagpole and the emblems of the different military branches will also be part of the middle of the park now, instead of having the flagpole at the entrance. So, working with the American Legion, I know that they have commissioned a local artist. They've been working with him for some design. We've gone back to him with some, with the, the size of the base so that they know what size the memorial can be. They will be kicking off a fundraising campaign to help fundraise the, the necessary dollars to build the memorial. So, as that project's moving on, we will continue to work with city staff and make sure that it meets, you know, the wants, the needs and the, the desired look of what a memorial should in the community. And then also, we're hoping that construction with the approval, you know, with the pending approval, hopefully construction can begin this fall and we can have an opening of the park Memorial Day 2022 with the, with the dedication of the memorial, probably late fall around a Veterans Day. They're trying to get a black marble or granite that comes from India and that's about eight months out. So, hopefully we'll do a nice dedication and an opening and invite the public to the new improved lookie of the park. And then in the fall, we'll kick off a, a dedication of a memorial for the veterans. So, at that point, I'll take whatever questions, if you have any.
So, as I understand it, if you're coming east on Deer Path or south on Green Bay, you'll be able to see into the park because it'll take down some of that wall.
So, a lot of the trees have been cleared already and there are still some others. We will be replanting some as well. But yes, you'll have a nice clear view into the park. The original sculpture that came in was a very large, with the goal of being able to see it from the road. And we've tamed that back, thinking that it's more appropriate to be an intimate setting in the middle where the park's focused around it. So, but yeah, you'll be able to see into the park. It'll be clear. A lot of the, the non-native and the, the trees and brush and poor condition will be removed if it hasn't already.
So, this actually came in front of the Civic Beautification Committee at our last meeting and it was wonderful that Chuck Myers was able to share that with all the, because I believe some of the garden clubs have actually donated to this park and it would, they seemed pleased with the overall design and moving forward with probably a little bit of increased maintenance, though, in reviewing who's going to handle the, the beds and things instead of just a, a basic mow and blow. So, I think for the entrance of the downtown business district, I think as well, it's a nice important piece we'll have.
Thank you. Alderman Romo.
I just have a budget question. So, you talked a lot about parks and public lands, so we're taking $289,000, right, out of Parks and Public Land Fund?
Mm-hmm. So, at the time, I'm sorry, at the time of doing the bid and everything, we weren't aware of the money that was, is going in there now, so that it was a decision that we had made to preserve that for other projects.
And then there's, and then you're taking 50 out of the Special Recreation Fund?
Correct.
What is the Special Recreation Fund?
So, we have a Special Recreation Fund that can be used for anything that is tied to, you know, Special Recreation ADA needs within city parks, our buildings. It's with the Special Recreation Tax. So, that money is budgeted every year on our NSSRA agreements, our projects within the city that are ADA-related to make sure that we can meet those needs as well.
Yeah, that was what I was wondering, if it was like a special needs recreation fund instead of just a, oh, we have this extra fund sort of thing, so.
It's all related to ADA and, and those requirements.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Just, just to remind everybody, this is, this Park and Public, what's it called again?
Park and Public Land Fund.
That, that fund has been sustained over the years by impact fees from new development. And you may recall from our more, one of our recent meetings, we decided to allocate some additional funds to that account because it was running dry, frankly. There just isn't enough land left to develop to sustain it. To buy our, the idea was to buy ourselves a couple of years and then figure out over the next couple of years how we're going to sustain that fund going forward. But this is one of the kinds of things that is, that, that that fund is used for, so. Okay.
Great, thank you.
You, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be nice to see that park opened up and made more.
I, I agree.
I hope we're having a big festival for them.
Well, it sounds like it's going to be on Memorial Day.
We'll have a nice grand opening celebration there, yes.
I'll leave the park, yes.
Yeah, yeah, you're going to have, be required to walk.
Ask St. Mary's for pardon.
Next item on our agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are, let's see, there are 12 of them tonight, so bear with me as I read through them. First is approval of the July 19th, 2021 city council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the check register for the period June 22 to July 23, 2021. Third is approval of a resolution of appreciation for firefighter paramedic Joseph Ace Tenonik. Fourth is approval of an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed 8.5 million of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city, providing for the levy, the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on said bonds, authorizing and directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issuance of said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the winning bidder thereof. And this will be the final reading. You may remember we had the initial, first reading of this last, in our last meeting. Fifth is approval of an additional three-year professional services agreement with Invoice Cloud for credit card processing services and integration with the city's ERP system. Sixth is consideration of an ordinance amending the City of Lake Forest City Code regarding the Class C1 and Class C3 liquor licenses. First reading and if appropriate, final approval. Seventh is approval of a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board to award a contract to Mag Construction for the Veterans Park Improvement Project in the amount of $306,245 plus 10% contingency in the amount of $30,625 for a total of $336,870. Eighth is award of a bid for a two-year HVAC preventive maintenance contract to Hayes Mechanical in the amount of $106,906. Ninth is the award of the thermoplastic lane marking contract to Superior Road Striping Inc. in the amount of $75,000. Tenth is consideration of an ordinance amending the intergovernmental agreement with the Solid Waste Agency of Lake County. Eleventh is approval of a three-year contract with Wox Water Services for valve exercising service, for a valve exercising service contract included in the fiscal year 22, fiscal year 24 operating capital budget for the sum of $52,245. And twelfth is approval of a three-year contract with Consulting Engineering, Inc. for leak detection service contract included in the fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2024 operating capital budget for the sum of $60,690. Are there any items on this list that any member of the council would like to have removed or taken separately? Are there any questions about any of these items? Okay, in that case, I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Romo?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Seven yea, three aye. Motion carries.
Thank you all. The last item on our agenda tonight is additional items for discussion or comments by council members. And I understand Alderman Weber would like to say something?
Sure, just a short note. We had such success over in Lasker Estates a couple of weeks ago with an ice cream truck to come and, and just kind of informally invite neighbors to come together and meet each other. And so, we have another date, August 15th. It's a Sunday and promptly at 6:45 at the corner of Hackberry and West Fork. We welcome anyone who'd like to come and purchase ice cream.
Great, thank you. Are you having block parties too?
We have not done that yet.
We should all have block party, parties. With all the new people that have moved into town, it's, it's, it's worthwhile, so. Alderman Romo, you had, I think, something you wanted to talk about?
Yes, I, I do. I wanted to, I did a little tour of my own of some of the capital improvement projects that were funded this past budget cycle. There were two projects in particular that have been completed that incorporated more environmentally sensitive aspects to them. The first one is the rain garden that was put in at the South Park parking lot when we redid South Park. And that has turned out to be just a beautiful addition to the park in addition to being environmentally sustainable. And congratulations to Chuck Myers and the Public Works staff for that. And the other one is the Old Elm parking lot. This is the train parking lot for the Fort Sheridan Station. It's at the corner of Old Elm and Wesley Road. And we invested a little extra money to put in what looks like R2-D2 there in the center, but it's actually an appliance that gathers and filters stormwater before it is expelled into those very sensitive ravines in the very sensitive Fort Sheridan Forest Preserve and then into Lake Michigan where we get our drinking water. So, it's kind of apropos after our recent discussion to see that we are incorporating some of these items into our capital improvement projects. And, and so kudos to, to the Public Works staff for pursuing these initiatives and thank you to the council and to residents for supporting them in so many ways. So, Mike Thomas is going to just review a couple of slides with us and if you want to go back, I encourage you to go and look at that rain garden at South Park. There's not much you can see at, at Old Elm other than three big catch basin, big sewer tops that go into this, but I'll let Mike talk about that.
Correct. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. The Old Elm parking lot, the structure is the The Old Elm parking lot, this structure is the first one that we have installed and we are going to look to install them now on future parking lots when we resurface them or restore them. We'll look to install these. They're more expensive, but they do exactly as what Alderman Rommel suggested. They take out all the solids on the stormwater, filters all that material. We then will bring our Vector truck over and clean out those basins. But these basins actually receive water from the various catch basins. The basin doesn't take water in directly. So it's, it's good in that it collects a lot of water, collects the water from the actual parking lot. The additional electric charging station, that is the second item that we're going to be looking at from now on to install in our parking lots. Our street section was able to run all the electric, work with ComEd to get the ComEd drop, and we're going to get that installed here probably another week or two. So two exciting things, two very good things for the environment that we're going to look to for all of our parking lots. It's going to cost some money, but they're, they're good in the end. Any questions on the parking lot? By the way, it's going to be striped Wednesday morning, I'm told, at 3:30 in the morning. So we're going to try and get there before the commuters arrive.
Can they get the stripes straight in the dark?
They'll be setting up lights. Yeah, that's, we hope.
Or we could have a watch party out there.
Yeah, with flashlights, with flashlights to help the guys out.
The second item is more with, is Alderman Rommel noted the Park and Rec Department, their South Park project that was completed last year. This bioswale is a good example of, again, something that we're going to be looking at installing in various parks. I know Chuck Myers, our superintendent of Parks and Forestry, is looking to install something similar at Forest Park as well, so he's working on that right now. But it's a, it's a great example of just another way we can filter the water before it enters our storm source system. So job well done to Chuck and, Chuck and the guys.
Is this something that we'll also incorporate into the other portion of South Park as we proceed forward with some of those improvements?
I believe so. I believe so, where, where they can be installed. I know Chuck is going to aggressively look at doing that, where it makes sense, where it makes sense, so.
Yeah, I would just say, it's great that we're doing this, because Mel and I have talked about less mowing and more of this. So this is terrific, so keep doing it.
Yep, so very happy with it.
Good.
That is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that, I believe, concludes the agenda for the evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
George?
Not bad.